I got a little caught, I got a little caught over there.
Yeah, there's a couch in my office.
What's that Christine?
There's a couch in my office.
I'll sleep up there tonight.
I've got some pretzels in my credenza.
Alright. There is an old shower downstairs Dan.
What's that Bob?
There is an old shower downstairs.
It's all good.
I've seen it man.
Well, I remembered former superintendent set it up so he could, he didn't have to go home in between meetings, he could go work out then shower and then come back and go to a meeting at night.
Megan you're muted.
You guys don't want to hear me anyway, I'm too tired to make coherent sentences. Do we have everybody back in Madam Secretary, it doesn't quite look like it.
I apologize, there's something wrong with my mic, can you hear me now?
I got you Rebecca, thank you.
Yes, you should have, yep, you're good with the quorum.
Thank you so much.
Rebecca, I think your mic retired.
That was a good one.
As it should, alright guys, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to our agenda at hand today. Next in our agenda today, the superintendent's report, part A, recommendations requiring action by the school committee. There's a motion upon the recommendation of the legal affairs subcommittee. The WRSD accepts the settlement agreement between AA Transportation and the WRSD as written. We are taking motions one through four and putting them together under motion four, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, is there discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote, member Ayala. Melissa? Circle back to Melissa, Krista, member Bennett? Go back, member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, no.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, no.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, no.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, no.
Member Longbullel?
Point of information, what is it we're voting on, sorry?
AA Transportation?
Uh, Longbullel, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell? Is Ben back with us? Want to come back to Ben, member Ottmar? Carl? I wonder if people are having a hard time getting back on, member Pantos?
Uh, Pantos, yes.
Member Silva? Asma?
Hard decision, but I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, member Smith? Christina? Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, no.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the top of the people that I couldn't reach, member Ayala? I just want everyone's vote to count. Uh, member Bennett? Um, Bennett, no. Um, member Ottmar? Oh, there's Melissa, Melissa, AA Transportation. You're muted.
Hi, sorry, um, AA Transportation?
Correct.
I vote yes.
Did Carl get back on?
I jumped on, Megan.
Oh, you're on now, good, um, then.
Yes.
Yes. I'm still missing Carl and then Christina, anybody see them on the call?
Why is this not letting me mute?
My computer's lagging, sorry guys. Life in Zoom land. Check one more time. Check my email, make sure they're not trying to get in, they're stuck, no. Alright, um, without them being present, um, the chair is gonna vote yes. And let me tell you the votes that we have for the people here. Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, I have 11 yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no. Is that correct Madam Secretary?
It's coming huh, it is Megan.
I got, oh, yeah, I'm getting there, so the motion passes, thank you everyone. Next to our agenda this evening. To ratify the collectively bargain contract between the WRSD and the Watchus Administrators Association, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Member Chair, we should we just, could you provide the public who's listening with just a brief synopsis of what it is we're voting on, it seems?
Sure, that, that sounds reasonable, so this is a contract between, um, the WRSD, uh, says the school district, and the Watchus Administrators Association who are our principals, um, this would be their contract for this current year, they've been working without a contract. Uh, member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson? Sorry, couldn't get on, um, yes. Haber?
Haber, yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbullel?
Longbullel, yes.
Mills?
Mills, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Did Carl hop back on, I don't think so. Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Smith, I don't think Christina hopped back on either, uh, Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yeah.
Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes and the motion passes. Next to our agenda this evening, to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the memorandum of agreement between the WRSD and the WREA, implementation of hybrid plan, and, uh, along with, uh, member Mills' suggestion, this is the MOA that we've been working on with the Teachers Association, the Teachers Association has previously ratified this and these are the working conditions under which, um, our children have been going to school since the hybrid, uh, began. Any discussion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? From the top, member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson? Yes. Haber?
Haber, yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbullel?
Longbullel, yes.
Mills?
Mills, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yeah.
Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next to our agenda this evening is the discussion of the superintendent's report, um, specifically, number one, education consultant Dr. Mary Mead Montague, um, to respect her time, would you mind if she goes first Darrell?
No, uh, so what, I'm all set with that, but what we'll do is that there's a presentation that Mary and I are both doing, uh, which kind of goes back to many of the requests for information that we've been, uh, responding to. So I'll, I'll put that up and we'll go back and forth with the presentation.
That sounds wonderful and thank you for joining us at this late hour, Dr. Mead.
She loves staying up late.
She's got to teach Rebecca some lessons about retirement.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, again, share my screen.
And Darrell, just in, in an effort not to interrupt you or Mary, um, I believe your presentation is longer than 20 minutes.
Uh, it is probably gonna be right about that.
I would take a point of order.
So I'm Point of order to extend to 10:30.
Second.
Motion extended 10:30 in a second, uh, any, there's more discussion, roll call vote, Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson? Yes. Haber?
Yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Long, uh, Lavoy, I'm sorry Matt?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbullel?
Longbullel, yes.
Mills?
Mills, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Pantos?
Pantos, no.
Silva?
Silva, no.
Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yeah.
Young?
Young, yes.
Chair votes yes and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much Chair Weeks and, uh, uh, welcome to Dr. Mead Montague, so, uh, again, this is a compilation of work that, um, Mary, Bob and I have been, uh, looking at over the past couple of weeks and we just wanted to share this with you, we'll try to keep it brief because I know how much time we've already spent doing many other things, so, um, there was a request for information around foreign language and, um, where we're at with middle school and high school. So you can see that, um, you know, up above here with Central Tree, uh, it's, we now offer German and Spanish, Choxit offers French, Mountview offers French and Spanish, Paxton Center offers Spanish, Thomas Prince offers Spanish, and the high school offers Latin, German, French and Spanish. And if you look down below in the grid, you'll note that through, uh, grades seven through 12, um, there's a breakdown of the number of students who took, uh, the foreign language in 2019, 2020, and then also 2020 and 2021. Um, so what you can basically see is, uh, the large majority of our students, um, are taking Spanish, a smaller portion take French, uh, still a smaller portion take German, and we have a, um, you know, below 30 students, uh, taking Latin over the past, uh, two years. We also had a request for information around middle school athletics, uh, these are the athletic, um, you know, in, in terms of the number of participants in middle school athletics, this is something that was removed from the budget this year as all middle school athletics were throughout the Commonwealth and, um, you know, looking at who participated in 18, 19, and this is a breakdown based upon the, um, activities that are offered at our three middle schools and two K8 schools. And down below, if you note, there's also total revenue, revenues for all middle school sports. Uh, in FY19 was a little over $90,000. Total expenses for all middle schools, um, sports was, um, almost 120, 125,000. And that does not include the salaries that come for coaching, uh, coach, the, the coaching staff, and that's $50,000 and that's out of the salary, um, line. So when you combine, uh, basically the difference between the 90 and the 124, uh, plus the 49, it's about $85,000 in terms of the overall cost. There was a question around strings and, um, the number of participants in strings back in 2019, 20. Um, at the middle school level, there were 21, uh, students that participated, and at the high school, we had 115. Uh, Dr. Mead Montague, I'll let you take over from here.
There was a request in reference to grade, grades and a comparison of quarter one grades over, over the three years. And in, in looking at quarter one failures, you can see, uh, the three-year comparisons. And in 2020, this year, our quarter one failures were 188, and this is course failures. So this is total course failures, uh, and not necessarily, it could be a student who has more than one failure. So this is not students, these are courses, the number of course failures. So you can see over in 2018 and 19, they were pretty comparable and you can see this year that there are a higher degree of course failures. Now, when you think about this over grades six through 12 comparatively, when we look at this statistically for a district, this is considerably low, uh, which is very good, but obviously, we don't want any of our students failing. And definitely, this number is higher, is considerably higher this year. And as we note statistically and we've seen, as we've looked at over not just the Commonwealth but over the country, we know that failures have increased this year. And true to our district also, our failure rates have increased. If you could go to the next slide, you can look at now by grade and you can see where they have increased, uh, this year. Now, if I, we've gotta reload?
Yeah, that was interesting. My whole, uh, the whole thing just shut down.
So by memory, I can tell you that the interesting part is that 12th grade, it did not increase, it actually went down, but if, when, uh, I'll just say that it increased in our middle school and going up to 11th grade, it increased in our failure rates, as he's pulling those back up, that we saw increases in our failure rates, um, in those grades.
I apologize, it's just
That's okay.
I can't even find my, uh, my whole window shut down, I can't even find the window to, did the presentation stop?
I think I've studied these numbers so much, I can remember.
Dr. McCall, I was able to pull up my screen, are you guys able to see my screen right now?
Okay, I think we've got it back, oh.
Dr. McCall, are you seeing, Dr. Mead?
I can actually see your screen, yes.
You can see it Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks Chris.
Um, Smith, yes, thank you for presenting. So as you can see from these numbers, you can see that middle school and up to 11th grade, this is where the numbers have actually increased, um, in the double digits, that they've increased in our, in our failure rates here in those grades. But again, when we're looking at a district, by far, these numbers are considerably lower throughout than when, when we're considering failures as a district, which we really have to attribute to our teachers and the work that they're doing with our students to think about why students, where students are, when they're falling down, what they're doing to mediate students and remediate them to ensure that they are making up work or correcting errors and, and getting them back on track, this is really significant. You can go to the next slide. And a-again, uh, this is just showing here what, where those comparisons are and you can see what is being done. You can go on. Some of the actions that are actually being taken now to address the increased failure rates are to really talk to parents and to reach out to, to parents and students to develop support plans for students who are failing, to really look at those, to work, bring more people into the fold, why are students failing? To work with our school counselors, our school psychologists, and our students, including parents in there to address the reasons why they're failing, to put plans in place, to develop some in-school supports for them. At the high school, we have an academic support cen- center in our high school media center that's provided throughout the day for students to drop into. We've expanded the number of students that are in cohort D that can get in-person support four days a week, and we're providing extra tutorial support for students. We've also allowed for more students to, where needed, if needed, to drop from, from five classes to four periods where needed, to get virtual tutoring and coaching support. I'll have you pick up, Dr. McCall? Dr. McCall? Can you hear me?
I, I can hear you, uh, Dr. Mead, I'm not sure if Dr. McCall wants me to present this slide.
Yeah, can you, Christine?
Yes.
Well, I think there we go.
Yep, okay. Um, so there was a question asked about the number of referrals being made to special education and whether or not we've seen an increase in special education referrals because of the COVID-19 school closure and remote learning. Um, I wanna share with the committee at this time that, um, we, in special education, we made a shift from our former data management tool, eSbed, to Power School, um, to manage our student data. This shift means that, um, the information that we have is not as readily accessible for the historical information and that it's not necessarily comparable across the platforms. However, within each school, we have kept records about, um, the testing that happens, those referral sources. Um, and it's a, that data is used mainly to keep track of our timelines, so each bit, each building manages that information a little bit different. But after a close inspection of all of that information, I can tell you that we have not seen an increase in special education referrals or 504 referrals, um, from families or other referring sources. Um, additionally, there was a question asked whether or not we have been dismissing students from special education. And, um, since March, I have been giving the directive to my team chairs that unless they have information that, or data and progress, um, from students prior to the closure, that students would not be dismissed from special education or 504 services at this time. Um, and again, unless there was, uh, special circumstances and, um, a data and progress from, um, pre-COVID times, if you will.
Again, there were questions, requests asked in reference to attendance and we have for you attendance for three-year comparison in our attendance. And you'd be surprised to look at our attendance during COVID at our three, at our, all of our schools. And our average attendance during COVID has been for quarter one, 97.6, a little lower for quarter two, 96.9, but when you think about the average, when you think about attendance, you wanna look at anything over 95, that's what our comparison, you wanna always be over that 95 percentage point for attendance. And we are rocking it in Watchus for attendance, this is, this is really good. Uh, we wanna keep those attendance rates high and, and we really have to attribute our attendance to what our, our, again, what our administrative teams are doing and what our teachers are doing when they don't see a student there, they're, they're calling parents and calling students and seeing where they are and really working to keep our students in, engaged and, um, contacting our parents to, you see where kids are and how they can support them in their learning. We, you can see from first quarter to second quarter, that for the majority of our schools, attendance went down, the attendance rate went down, um, not loads, uh, but a little, I think we have one school that maintained the same attendance, Glenn Wood, it maintained the same attendance rate. But if you look over the years, so if you go to 2018, um, our attendance rate in 2018 in quarter two was 95.5. When you go to our attendance rate in 2020 for quarter two, 96.9, and this is COVID. Go, oh, sorry, go back one minute to our slide, thank you, uh, Christine. So again, go, go to quarter one, um, a few years ago, and you look at 96.8, quarter one, 97.6. So again, when you think about a worldwide pandemic and where we are and our attendance being much higher now than it was back then, you can see that schools have put in processes to ensure that attendance, school attendance is something that, that is taken seriously, is valued, there are systems that have been put in place to really ensure that, that our students are in school daily. This is, and our parents obviously value it and our, and our students are there. Can move on. And here you can see our attendance at subgroups and one of the things that when we look at our subgroups, you wanna begin to see, are there any disparities that we're looking at? To see why, where are there subgroups that have a considerably lower attendance rate than others? And if you look at this, you will see in our data that are, um, there are a couple of subgroups that are lower, our special education subgroup is lower, our free and reduced subgroup is lower in our attendance rate. Move on. So again, as I mentioned before, our numbers are strong. Staff really have worked hard at encouraging our students to be to school, be in attendance and have reached out to parents for any issues or concerns they have in reference to attendance. Darrell, will you pick?
Sorry, yep, uh, I'm on it, thanks. And sorry about my computer dropping out, um, Chrome just crashed on me. Um, so dropout rates, uh, there was a request for information on that. This is a, um, again, this is data directly from DESE, these are the dropout rates, uh, associated with 2018, 19, and also 17 and 18. Um, so, you know, when you, when you look at it, you know, our overall rates are, you know, fairly, fairly low. We don't want anyone dropping out, um, but, um, comparatively, uh, our, our high school's in a pretty good place. 2019, 20, dropouts, we had eight altogether and thus far this year, um, Principal Bianno, uh, has been, you know, again, working with the counselors and thus far this year, they have, they have six dropouts at, at this time. And then graduation rates, uh, there was a request, uh, again, for information concerning graduation rates. I know these are hard to see, this is directly from DESI, uh, as well, and, you know, you can see back in 2018, we were at about a 98.2% um, graduated rate, um, in, in terms of the overall cohort for a four-year adjusted rate. And in 2019, we were at 97.2. Those are really good rates in terms of, uh, overall graduation numbers, uh, when you're, you're looking at, um, our school compared to other schools in Worcester County. in Wester County, you know, actually compared to schools in Massachusetts. So we do a good job graduating students here. You know, one of the things, remember Ottmeyer asked, you know, how did, how did the first week of school go? Very much concerned about, you know, the transition to hybrid. So, you know, we put together a quick little survey, shared it with building principals, and, you know, just wanted to get a little feedback from them. So on a scale of one to five, with one being very smooth and five being very difficult, how would you rate the transition to hybrid learning at your school? And, you know, you can see that, you know, we had two that said it very smooth, five said it was, you know, pretty smooth, one was indifferent, four said it was difficult, and, you know, one said it was very difficult. So that's where you can really see just kind of the, the spread across the spectrum in terms of our building principals and what they're looking at. This is probably very similar to what teachers are looking at. You're going to have some teachers who are like, yeah, just, you know, kind of just went right into it. And then others are going to be like, this was just a real challenge. And, you know, so much of what we do, you know, again, we're all creatures of habit and we're used to how things typically work. And, you know, when things get thrown off, I think that plays a role in how we're able to kind of respond to things. But I have to say that, you know, they, they were very honest with kind of their responses. So if you can move to the next one, Chris. So just a couple of quotes from them. You know, I think most protocols, et cetera, have gone very well for us. This has been facilitated, facilitated by low student numbers in the buildings for Cohorts A and B. I think the reason for a two and not a one is that teachers are still trying to master the actual teaching while exploring how best to reach their students. And again, that kind of encompasses how teachers are, you know, working through this. And, and this was taken that first week, but that's, I thought that was a good way to kind of, you know, basically pull together their thoughts on this. Another quote, "There were certainly smooth parts in terms of transition, safety protocols wise, things went well. And we were fortunate that we were fully staffed. However, from a principal perspective, it is challenging trying to schedule the day with less time, cover lunch and recess, and support the technology needs of the buildings." So again, that's that, it's not typical. So, you know, when you're trying to do a million different things as a building principal, and you're also worrying about all these other things now that you typically didn't have to worry about, it becomes a very long, arduous day. And then finally, logistically, overall, I think it's gone smoothly. Hybrid learning, teaching remote, and in-person, greater challenge. So again, that's kind of the, that's, it's, it's a challenge doing the hybrid learning, the teaching remote and in-person. You know, when we're meeting with WREA and the teachers talk about kind of what they're dealing with and how they're doing it, I think some are like, yeah, this is, you know, I feel like it's really rolling. And others are like, yeah, it's, it's going okay, but it's tough. It's tough. So I think that's part of what we're, you know, dealing with as, as a, as a community, as we, we work through the subtle nuances of, you know, these in-person hybrid remote models. And then Mary put together a nice slide associated with the items that we were looking at. And one of the things we did was please check the box by any of the areas below where they are, there are ongoing issues, concerns that you need support and addressing at your school. So you can see that there were several different items, from lack of staff to support student learning, down to lack of technology, need for staff professional learning, transportation, CAF building, no issues. And overall, lack of staff was probably the, I mean, you can see it, twenty-three point five percent. That was the, the largest portion that, that people chose. Also, staff professional development, student connectivity, and teacher connectivity. So, you know, those are all pieces that principals are continually kind of concerned about. Some of the connectivity associated with these items were for schools that were still having some problems. We think they're going to be resolved at the two schools. Barry said that he feels like, I think, everything was connected over at Naquag and Central Tree this week. So hopefully that works out well. But, you know, for the most part, that's what we're dealing with and we're trying to assist principals moving forward with this. Mary, did you want to chime in?
Yes, could I just add something? When they say lack of staff, I think I just want to clarify, the lack of staff is truly, what they said was lack of staff due to ongoing COVID issues. It's not that they had a lack of staff in that they don't have enough staff in their building. It's that staff have gone in and out because of quarantine situations. So they've said, when all their staff is there, life is good. But many times, they've had to have reduced staff because of quarantine issues. So all of a sudden, a staff member has to quarantine for ten days, and they've had one, two, sometimes five members of their staff that have been out. And that's when it's difficult because they, it is very difficult during COVID times to get subs who will come into a building. So this is where the challenge from lack of staff comes in. And then also in reference to connectivity, I want to be very clear that in their answers, they were very clear to, and I just want to give a shout out to Barry and his team because they were, they gave really a lot of kudos to the responsiveness of the IT staff. They said that they are so responsive to all of their needs. There have been some connectivity issues, but they have been, the district team has been very responsive to everybody's needs. So I really just want to give a kudos to the whole district team because of that and to all the leadership at the district and school level. Because for this whole transition, they've talked about all the preparation that the principals have had, the school leaders have had. And I just have to share with you that the way, one of the things, it was nice hearing from principals, but the nicest thing is to hit the neighborhood. And that's one of the things that I've done, is hit, hit my neighborhood and spoke to students. And that's key to hearing how things are going. And they say it's going pretty good, very different than what they thought. They thought when they could go back, it was going to be business as usual. And they say, man, it's not the same as it used to be. But they really appreciate being in school. So, and they appreciate what their principals and teachers are doing.
Yeah, and, and thanks for elaborating on that, Mary. That's exactly what's happening. And, you know, and again, I think principals were very open about this. And I think as we kind of go through this, and I throw this back out to them in a couple of weeks, you know, they'll probably, you know, have similar responses in terms of staffing. But I, I really feel like they'll be in a different place. There are some questions about, or, you know, I guess there was a request looking at hybrid versus remote and how that kind of played out. So this was the parent selection back in October. So when we first did this, these are the actual numbers. So that blue bar represents the percentage of hybrid, and the red bar represents the percentage of remote from October 23rd based upon people's requests. So, you know, going from Central Tree all the way down to the high school, you know, or actually to Thomas Prince, you'll note, all the remote is under twenty-five percent. It's probably in that twenty down to twelve, fourteen percent. With the exception of the high school, it's probably up in the thirty-two, thirty-two percent range. So if you can, thanks, Chris. So proceeding chart, you know, shows percent of students who initially chose to participate in hybrid learning and in remote learning. So all schools with the exception of the high school, they were anticipating more than seventy-five percent of enrolled students to participate in hybrid learning, where students would receive in-person instruction two days a week and remote instruction on the remaining three days. And the high school was expecting to have more than sixty-five percent of students participate in hybrid learning. So as of January 24th, so, you know, we pulled the information from that time, this is actually what it, what it looks like. So this is the reality. You can see our percentage of hybrid has dropped and our percentage of remote has increased. So you'll probably, you know, you'll recall, Central Tree was, you know, there was no one above twenty-five percent. So Central Tree was above twenty-five percent. And most of these numbers are, are up. And you get to the high school and it's, it's basically fifty-fifty. And if you can go to the next slide, Chris. So the chart just reflects the percentage of students who are currently participating in hybrid and remote. Some schools are now seeing less than seventy-five percent of the enrolled students actually participating in hybrid learning. And high school, like, as I said earlier, it's basically fifty percent of the students are in hybrid and fifty percent are participating in remote. And then a comparison of hybrid versus, versus remote. Here's where we have the initial percentage of remote, which is the blue, and that was from October. And the red is the actual percentage that we're currently looking at. So you'll note that there was an increase with all communities, with the exception, all schools with the exception of Glenwood, where there was actually a drop in the number of remote. And if you can move that one, Chris, to the next slide. So you'll note that it's originally signed, it was for originally for those who signed up for remote-only instruction in October. And then the, the number of people who actually participated in remote only on January 24th. Glenwood saw an increase in the number of students, the only school that did. And then this has resulted in smaller class sizes, and this is important on average for the in-person sessions in both Cohorts A and B. And I believe that information was shared with all school committee members a little earlier today. And then students in hybrid and remote, this is the percentage of student population in hybrid and remote as of the 24th of January. So you'll note, if you look at this by grade, grade 12, you'll see that you have, you know, over fifty percent who are participating remotely and a little under fifty percent who are hybrid. And if you go all the way down, you have, you know, probably close to eighty-five percent of kindergarten students who are participating in hybrid and fifteen percent are participating remotely. So it's an interesting, you know, it's an interesting model. Well, you can see how it's kind of playing out. But in terms of the, the in-person learning, we're definitely seeing more of, you know, a push to have that occur at the earlier levels than at the high school levels. So, and again, you know, each grade who were not participating hybrid, that's what it basically shows, two days in person, three days remote, and then five days remote for, for the, each week. Eleven and twelve more students participating in remote than hybrid. It's not the case in all the other grades. And there is an increase in the number of students participating in hybrid learning in the lower grades. So, you know, and again, you know, that was something that we had been anticipating. So we kind of got that, we did that in about a half an hour, give or take. So tried to, thank you so much, Mary and Bob. Bob spent a lot of time pulling together information on that. And, you know, Mary did a nice job heading some of those slides as well. So thank you.
Thank you all, those are a lot of information to digest in that regard and also due to the late hour. I'm going to go around the table. We haven't done that in some time to see if members have questions or comments. I do ask you to keep your comments as succinct as humanly possible. So hopefully we can get to a few other things tonight as well. I'm going to start just randomly. Let's go with Member La Boy first. I don't think you've gone first yet. It's Matt, too surprised.
Thank you. No, I had to find the mute button. I, I appreciate all of the, the information. And I know it probably took a while to, to gather all that and put it together. I think there's one concern that I have, and it's, it's the correlation. When I look at attendance, it appears that people are, kids are attending school. But there were some really high increases when we looked at courses for failed courses. I think the, the first stat or, or slide showed a sixty-eight percent increase from the previous year. When we looked at it by grade, there were some grades that were on, close to a three-hundred percent increase, some that, that were doubling. So my question is, how are we, how are we thinking about managing not necessarily attendance, because we know people are, are there, but engagement, right? And I think that that's, that's the key piece that, that is probably missing from that component. So whether that is a transition to look at the fall and perhaps going back towards a fuller model, whether that's more, more opportunity in the summer, what are we doing to, to help that engagement and even to help our educators? Because I, I suspect that that, that's part of it as well. So that's, that's just one observation. But I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak first and I appreciate the, the thorough presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Great questions. Those are all things that we're looking at. You know, we can tell you that we do have a team of, you know, as we mentioned in the presentation, we have a team of teachers who are working directly with those students who are, are not necessarily always making the connection. So even though they're logged in and they're, they're considered there, they might not be there and participating. And that's, that is, that's a very, it's actually, it's, it's happening more frequently everywhere. That's not just Wachusett, it's every single district. And I think part of it is just that lag of, boy, these kids are just being online for a long time. They're getting tired of it, and, and that's understandable. So, you know, we're, we're doing our best to keep those, you know, lines of communication open with the parents in particular, even at the high school level, you know, making sure that there's that open line of communication that's going on at all times. But also, you know, how, trying to engage those students in a way where it's not just, you know, setting them up to say, okay, you've got to do this, this, and this. You know, I'm sorry you didn't do it, checkbox. So building in the SEL part, having counselors touch base with them. There are teams at the high school level and at the middle school level that are, are working with these kids as well. So again, this will lead to more conversations about how we support them during the summer as well.
Thank you both of you for that questioning and that response. Number Long Bullio.
Yes, on the question of the kids who are receiving failing grades, do we know how many unduplicated kids that is?
No, it's, it's courses, Linda. So unfortunately, it, it wasn't, you know, when, when we went to try to extract the information from Power School, it, you know, you'd have to go through each individual throughout the district to find it.
Would it be possible at some point to do that? I mean, through, through Power School, you've, you've got the, you've got the kids in the group, you've got the kids in each class, and you have, you can't, you can't connect the failing grade to the kid?
We, we can take a look at it. We attempted to do that, Linda, but it, it wouldn't allow us to do it through the certain module that we're using. But we, we'll definitely continue to take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Mills, please.
Thank you for the data. Four of the data questions for mine. So I just want to lay out the policy question that was behind all that great data that you put out there, because that's kind of the important part, right? First off, for the foreign language, I saw a zero for French in seventh grade. So is French still being offered at the middle school this year, next year? Because there is a zero there.
Uh, yeah, it, it will be yes.
It will be next year.
It, it should be yes.
Okay. The second thing is with the athletics, I see that eight hundred and fourteen participants, some duplicates, I'm sure, about a hundred dollars a kid short. We charge a hundred and thirty dollars less per kid at the middle school than we do at the high school. So that might be food for thought for how you preserve that program without hurting the budget.
Yeah.
Is, is a food for thought. For the strings, when we were in person, we tried to cut strings ten years ago. Some young lady came and played on her violin for us, and we didn't cut it. Now it's the dark of night, literally, ten seventeen. I'm sort of the only person, I feel, that ever keeps bringing this up. We cut this district-wide program, not very many kids, twenty-one kids. But Tempo, I'm sure feels very strongly about the middle school strings program. We haven't heard from them at any of our meetings. We sure as heck did the last time we did this. I think it's flown under the pandemic radar, and I don't want it to fly under the radar. So I'll probably keep mentioning it again. Last observation, then maybe you can respond to that, is, is the, the reason I asked for all that last data with the, the, which grades were remote and whatnot, is that I think it shows us two things. One, it shows us where the demand really is for in-person if we have to prioritize. It's not as much at the high school, but it's definitely at the young grades. So if we have to bring them back in shifts, it sort of shows demand is K-two first and less at the high school if there, if there is a reason for a limit. Also, at the high school, this is anecdotal information. I'm totally happy my kid only has two other kids on his bus. There's probably nothing we can do about it. But we are burning a lot of gas in this district, transporting new body to, to the high school. And if there's some way, even just environmentally, that can be addressed. If not money-wise, it's, it's an important issue. But the strings thing, I'd like to hear your thoughts about that. But the strings thing, I'd like to hear your thoughts about that, um, and, you know, some of the other points I made.
Sure, so, um, yeah, I'll, I'll start with the last part about the, the buses. It, you know, again, we had to run the buses to start off with to see, you know, how many kids were actually getting on and so forth. So we've now done this for a couple of weeks, we'll definitely take a look at it. Um, I would much rather have a bus sit and wait and then go pick kids up at Choxit and Sterling rather than do, uh, a Sterling run with two kids and another Sterling run with three kids and just, you know, combine them and, and bring them in. That, that's definitely a possibility. You know, we always have to have the buses ready, as you know. Um, but if we don't have to run them, you're right, environmentally, you know, we're saving, we're saving, saving a little bit, actually probably a lot by not running a bus for 45 minutes. Uh, you know, in terms of the strings, uh, we, we've not heard anything, Ken, you're exactly right. Uh, but, uh, it doesn't mean that we can't take a look at it. Um, it, it is something that has, you know, been on the back, on the back burner for a long time because it's, it's not easy to schedule and it's something that I think gets brought up. You know, when we discuss possible reductions with our administrative team, and that's at the building level as well. Um, but we will definitely keep that in mind when we're looking at this moving forward. Uh, and then, uh, some of the other items, I completely agree. I think someone, uh, brought, brought this up a little earlier. Um, you know, the fact that we have our, our, you know, K1, 2, 3, those, those groups where we have students who, you know, really need to be in school, um, and at the high school level, it's, it's different. Um, you know, they can get away with a, an online course, not that it's fantastic, but, um, they, they're able to do it and they're able, they're able to get through it in a way that, uh, is much more challenging for a, a six-year-old or a seven-year-old to do. So that's, that's on our radar in terms of how we might be able to move forward with that as well.
But if we do reduce strings and languages, I'd appreciate it if that could be brought to us so that we can make those decisions. I mean, kids go to private schools when they can't do things like take Mandarin or take strings or whatever. And we're seeing kids fly, you know, flush away and not maybe come back, so.
Yep, yep.
It's something we should discuss.
Definitely.
Thank you, Member Mills. Um, again, let's keep sustained, I think we're going to have to have a motion to extend shortly. Um, Member Pantos.
Thank you. Are we, uh, discussing just the previous presentation or the superintendent's report as well?
Um, either, if you have a point to make there.
Uh, thank you for the data. It really helps to see all of this. I'm a little bit disappointed that it looks like, uh, sixty, around a 60% increase in, uh, failing courses. But, uh, that's about what I would expect given the current circumstances. So thank you for all the data, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Cara, I thought you had dropped off, so I'll circle back to you now. Member Ottmar, please.
All right, thank you, sorry about that. Uh, I have a question and a comment. So a question, um, just in regards to, uh, if, if someone, or if you've been, have the information on like what the spacing within classrooms at the high school looks like, since we're kind of all the way down to 50%. So, um, just, I know that from the get-go, the high school was kind of pinched tight enough. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that and kind of see how, um, how, like how that is, how you've been able to make adjustments on that.
Yes, it's, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. It's definitely better. I, I did talk to Principal Bendo about that last week and he was going to get back to me after looking at those spaces, uh, because we have had less kids. So we've been able to space out much more so than we had thought we were going to be able to do. Um, uh, there still are some spaces, and he did say that, that, um, you know, are a little less than six feet. But he said that, um, it's much better, uh, than what we had originally anticipated, where we thought maybe 50% of the classrooms would be, uh, under that six-foot mark.
Okay, and then just the comment that I would just make in regards to especially the, uh, again, appreciate kind of the lessons learned, kind of pulling the information from like things that have gone well, things that haven't have gone well. And certainly with staffing, I'm hoping that at least even as the district will kind of just try and iron things out and kind of work, kind of work forward on that. Because like, as an example from like what, what we saw with Dawson, that when our staffing gets pinched so tight that we have to pull our director of special ed and a special ed coordinator out of central office to help provide coverage, that, that really concerns me because it sends a message that in-person learning at Dawson is more important than our district's special education. We didn't mean to send that message, but we said, we identify priorities with how we allocate resources. And it creates the impression that as a district, we value in-person education more than we value our district's special education. So we just need to be careful about that because we don't, we don't want to be sending those kinds of messages to everyone else in the district. And so going forward, hopefully, when we look at these staffing pinches, we can try and figure out, kind of figure out our, our way around it. Because it's, uh, like I said, that's not quite where we want to end up when we're kind of creating that impression to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we're going to go back to the order. Uh, Member Silva, please.
I want to thank the administration for all that information. Um, the questions I, I had were asked, but I just wanted to make sure that we remember that originally when we talked about hybrid, we were under the impression there'd be a very small community of remote, um, of kids who chose the remote option. From your graphs, it seems there's still a considerable amount of kids. And I just want to reiterate that, and we've talked about this many times even in this meeting, that we want to make sure that they're getting the, the, the right course of attention, uh, from the teachers and instruction. But thank you for all the information, I think, and all the questions I had have, have already been asked, so I won't waste anybody's time.
Thank you, Member Silva. Um, Member Sullivan, please.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation, I appreciate it. I, I have no, uh, further questions, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Williamson.
I was just curious if you could talk a little bit more about, um, some of the work that, that's been done to address some of the failures?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things that we've done, and this happened, you know, very early on, you know, especially with students who are, um, you know, in, in, who weren't necessarily making connections, uh, when we were fully remote. Um, so, you know, specifically, we had, um, teams that were put together, uh, to work around developing, you know, plan, plans of action to work with those kids to get them involved. I know at the, at the high school, one of the things, that was a, a part of a cohort D to get those kids into school. So we had a support system put in place where we had, um, some substitutes help those kids who, who got into school. Um, even though they were still working remotely, there was still an adult there to help them, you know, make sure that they get on, they got online. Uh, very, something very similar, uh, happened at the, at the middle schools as well as we were kind of going through that process. So again, part of it is, um, you know, keeping the connection alive. I think that's one of the most challenging parts. I, i- and this is something I, I hear from, uh, other superintendents, uh, principals in other districts and so forth. It's keeping the connection because it's very easy for kids to say, okay, you know what? I'm going to shut my, I'm going to shut my camera off and I'm just going to be there, but I'm really not going to be there. And that's always the concern. And I think that's one of the concerns that, um, you know, our teachers have and our principals have. So they're all about trying to keep the connection alive and open.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. There is a motion to adjourn that has been made and seconded. Let's hope the roll calls vote. That is a motion that is in order at this time. Member Alva.
I yell a no.
Got it.
Wait, wait, to adjourn?
Someone made the motion.
Oh, yes. Got it, yes.
Ron?
Ron, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gosseson? Malia? Is that a no? Okay, I think the horizontal nod is the no nod. Give me a thumbs down if that's a no. Thumbs down for no. Okay, good. Haber?
I know.
Kirsten Baum?
Kirsten Baum, yes.
La Boy?
La Boy, yes.
Longbulio?
Longbulio, nothing personal to anyone, yes.
Mills?
Mills, no.
Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Woodland?
Guys, seriously? I was about to ask my questions. I, I vote no.
Young, I think Adam would drop off. I also vote no. Um, let's count these up, I think. It's very close. One, two, three, four, five, six noes. I think the yeses have it. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Yeses, yeses have it, we are adjourned. Good evening, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.